You you got the cash back up?
Yes.
Thank you.
So you know, so your taxes come in, I can usually pay that reserve. So, okay, we need to approve some debt payments for April fifteenth. The first one is one hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. And that's for the GOB series two thousand and sixteen. Oh.
Motion to approve that payment?
Second.
We moved in second that we approved that general obligation bond payment. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Six thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents for our two thousand and seventeen GOB bond.
Make a motion to approve the general obligation bond for two thousand and seventeen?
It's removed from second, any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-five cents for our general obligation bond of two thousand and twenty-one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We moved in second, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same signs, so moved. Anything else? All right, thank you, so. Morning.
Morning. Justin Ailey, Director of Community Services. Personnel transactions, resignations and terminations. Michelle Hoffman, Volunteer Resource Coordinator, one at Area Agency on Aging, Termination Effective March sixth. Dylan Larada, Caseworker, one in Children in Youth Services, resignation is a date correction to March eighth. Beth Redinger, Full-Time M A T P Coordinator, Community Action Partnerships, Retirement Effective September twenty-eighth. Mitchell David, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, Resignation Effective March eleventh, Last Working Day, January seventh. Jamelle Glover, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, Resignation Effective March fifteenth. Valerie Anderson, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, Resignation Effective March fifteenth. Cammy Lick, Office Support, one at the Jail, Removal, No Call, No Show, Effective March eleventh. Zachary Faust and Reem Mennig, both full-time telecommunicators, both with Department of Emergency Services, both rescinded their acceptance of employment that was supposed to be effective on March eighteenth. Dalton Lovell, Full-Time Telecommunicator, Department of Emergency Services, Resignation Effective March thirtieth. Stephen Kiefer, Detective, District Attorney's Office, Detectives Bureau, Termination Effective March eighteen. Tylecha Irisari, District Justice, Office Support, one at M D J Figueroa's, Resignation Date Correction to March first. Alita Beduski, Juvenile Probation Officer, Probation Services, Resignation Effective March twenty-second. Erin Earnfield, Juvenile Probation Officer, Probation Services, Resignation Effective April first. Morgana Bradley, Residential Services Coordinator at the Redova Center, Resignation Effective March twelve. And Steven Gato's Chief Deputy Sheriff in the Sheriff's Office, Retirement Effective April second.
Make a motion to approve the resignations and terminations as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Like to wish Sheriff Gato some good retirement, he has been here quite a while.
Under leaves of absence, Mitchell David from the jail, four-week leave of absence, all unpaid, effective February twelfth, return date of March twelfth. And Donald Perkins, Jail, thirty-day leave of absence, all PTO, effective March eighth, return April second.
Motion to approve those leads.
Second.
We moved in second that we approve those OAs and questions. Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same signs, so ordered.
Changes to status, transfers and promotions, I have several motions. The first is to acknowledge the amended order of the court from President Judge John C. Tillwak, ordering effective retroactive to January one, two thousand and twenty-three. All court-appointed employees working in the probation services for the department who meet the on-call eligibility requirements as per department policy and have been approved by this court and/or its designated to be eligible to participate in on-call status and to be paid in accordance with the rates set forth and ratified by the current Court Appointed Professionals Collective Bargaining Agreement. This will result in retroactive pay for those assigned on-call from January one, two thousand and twenty-three through October nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three, when the original order became effective.
So moved.
Second.
We moved in second that we approve the President Judge's order. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, so moved.
Motion to approve President Judge Tillwak's recommendation to increase the law clerk positions within the courts from thirty-five hours worked per week to forty hours worked per week, effective April first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We moved in second that we approve that order of, excuse me, that recommendation of President Judge Tillwak. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Motion to approve President Judge Tillwak's recommendation to increase the law clerk without-the-bar positions within the courts from a grade thirteen to a grade fourteen on the non-union salary chart, effective April first, two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve President Judge Tillwak's recommendation to increase the law clerk without without the law. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Motion to approve the recommendation of Sheriff Jeffrey Steve Marley, Jr., to add a second interpreter stipend in the sheriff's office budget at the rate of one thousand and five hundred dollars annually, effective April first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We moved in second that we approve Sheriff Marley's. Questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Motion to approve Treasurer Sally Nimmel's request to have the current employees in the treasurer's office and Belinda Spicer and tax plan to work an additional two-point-five hours per week at straight pay and up to a maximum of five hours per week at overtime pay for approximately six to eight weeks as needed, effective March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Jamie Montalvo, Promotion from Adult Abuse Investigator, Area Agency on Aging to Aging Care Manager Supervisor, two at Area Agency on Aging, at the rate of two thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-two cents by weekly, effective April first.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We moved in second that we approved those, that transaction, any question? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Under other transactions, I have another motion to approve Chief Clerk of Voter Registration, Sean Jasher's recommendation to create a temporary full-time deputy position within the voter registration office for Suzanne Hauser to provide training to the new deputy employee for the period of April first, two thousand and twenty-four, through Suzanne's last day on May third, two thousand and twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve Sean's request for voter registration.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Children in Youth would like to hire Mark Cathcartman as a caseworker, one at the rate of one thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixteen cents by weekly, effective March twenty-fifth. District Attorney would like to hire Trinity Graff as a full-time central booking agent in the central booking department at the rate of fifteen dollars and eight cents per hour, effective March twenty-fifth. President Judge Tillwak would like to hire Jessina Schubert as a D J Office Support, one for M D J Figueroa's office at the rate of nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-four cents by weekly, effective March twenty-fifth. Voter Registration would like to hire Joy Scarborough, if I said that wrong correctly, Deputy at the rate of one thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and twenty-seven cents by weekly, effective April first.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We moved in second that we approve those transactions, any questions regarding the motion? Thought that our new person is here, brave enough to be here for the vote, that's pretty, pretty good way to start. Oh, and, and welcome, too late. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Moving on to Salary Board, Motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Judith Huber, Salary Increased Law Clerk at the Courts to the Rate of two thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventeen cents by weekly, effective April first. Toby Burr, Salary Increase Law Clerk in the Courts to the Rate of two thousand, sixteen dollars and ten cents by weekly, effective April first. Dave Al Endhar, Interpreter Pay, Full-Time Deputy Sheriff in the Sheriff's Office, Annual Interpreter Pay of one thousand, five hundred dollars, effective April first, which is prorated. And Santos Varela, Longevity Payment, Full-Time Correctional Officer of the Jail, One-Time Thirty-Five-Year Payment at the Rate of three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Bradley Seifert, Salary Increase Lieutenant in the Sheriff's Office to the Rate of two thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-one cents by weekly, effective April first. And Amanda Rittenhour, Salary Increase Lieutenant in the Sheriff's Office, the Rate of two thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-one cents by weekly, effective April first.
Make a motion to approve those requests.
Second.
We moved in second that we approve the Salary Board recommendations, any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same signs, so moved. Thank you, Michelle.
Hey, I'll fill in.
Sure.
There, kind of adapt and maybe end up with work election sooner.
Good morning. Aaron, just introduce yourself and then proceed.
I'm Aaron Boyer, and I'm the Administrator for Children and Youth. I'm here today to present first and second quarter invoices for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. First up, we have our first quarter invoices for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four in the total amount of three million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars, and I ask that you approve first quarter invoices for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
We moved in second that we approve those first quarter invoices for children and youth, any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying, by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
I have second quarter invoices for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four in the total amount of three million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. And I ask that you approve those second quarter invoices for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the second quarter invoices as presented.
Okay.
It's been moved and duly seconded, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved. Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Before she did, I just would like to recognize Miss Boyer for her going beyond, above and beyond the call of her duties and helping to organize the week-only day of fishing, which is coming up on April thirteenth. That we normally get, we've been doing that event for twenty years now and Jim Holtry was one of the founders of that event, but Aaron has taken the reins in that machine, thank you for doing that, you know, in your
A lot of attention about it, yeah.
Thanks, you're a great machine.
Thank you, Aaron.
Mount lava, happy kids, sir.
Yeah.
Morning.
Morning.
Happy birthday, Mike.
And Laura.
And Laura, yeah.
Tom. Well, when we have celebrities here, we have to get them first.
I'd like to introduce Chuck Stradoski, is with Y S M Landscape Architects. They did the design of the park, Johnny Wenger Memorial Park. And after great anticipation, several years of fundraising, we're at the point where we're ready to bid it. I think I said, opening the bids on the agenda, that was an error, we're, we're actually here just to get approval to advertise for bids.
Would you introduce your colleagues, those fine volunteers here?
Sure, Desinger, Vice President of L B R T, or Treasurer, sorry, Treasurer, and Tom Kotay, Board Member of L B R T. Critical grant writer.
Yes, both, both critical volunteers for the history, throughout the whole history of the rail trail, so anyway, with all that, you're up.
Yeah, again, as John said, we're, we're anxious to get the project going, you know, we the master plan that was done a number of years ago, but we looked at, I applied for a grant for phase one, which was essentially a traffic garden, a, a small, kind of a tricycle track and playground area for kids, so that they could have a safe place to play right off the Lemon Valley Rail Trail. And then, a little further down, there was an area for fitness equipment that also came about, so submitted the grant based on the master plan here, and we've been working over the past year or so to kind of finalize construction documents that we we're, we're at a point where we're very close to getting ready to bid the project, and these are just kind of illustrations of the construction documents, you can see it, it came out pretty close to what the original plan was, so there is a children's playground, age segregated, that is situated here, and a tricycle track runs around the area with again, just waits kids to ride bikes safely off the streets. It's played up as a little town, there's a small town square in the center with facades of buildings, crosswalks, you know, stop signs, railroad crossings, all the things, you know, kids just to kind of like their imagination and you know, enjoy the park, so playground area, there's a picnic pavilion that goes associated with it, and it's right at the confluence of Quiddy Creek and the Hazel Dyke stream that runs through, so playground, and then, as I say, the fitness area, further down the site, but two areas with just, you know, nice quality outdoor exercise equipment, so people can get some outdoor fitness in along the trail. A small pavilion also to anchor that, just to provide shade and the in the heat of the summer, so.
Can you point out the rail trail, where, where's the rail trail on?
Yeah, the rail trail, it's hard to read on this graphic.
East to Twelfth Street.
Yeah, the rail trail, I guess, there, there's a trail now that runs up this way, and then there's a spur that's under construction that is you know, in light gray, kind of runs this way through the site and all the way out, so both areas of these improvements, the fitness area is located immediately adjacent to the trail, and then the playground is, is, again, off the Hazel Dyke, just, just north of the trail.
Really transformed, yeah, the whole area, all the way up to Twenty-second and, you know.
Yeah, a lot happening in that, a couple blocks.
Yeah, a lot of good things, yeah.
In the building facade area of the traffic garden, we did try to make it theme towards the dairy, so that'd be the connection with my, with my dad. So they have some some early photos of the dairy and can be some silos and things that'll be pretty interesting, pretty excited about that part.
Awesome.
Can't imagine why.
Yeah.
Yeah, the little old photos, yeah, here, you know, some constructive details. Again, I talked about that, there's like a town square for the tricycle track, so all the trails kind of confluence at the one trail, and then we have these little block facades, and as John pointed out, you know, one is kind of emblematic of, or emblematic of the, the Wanger Dairy that sits there, so it is there, and then a little more detail, scale of the playground, so again, that, that square is here, the, the dairy is represented over here, the facade for that is there. Some silos that'll kind of be a backdrop to that facade, and then, of course, the larger playground area, yeah. So we are, again, at a point where I think we're, we're pretty close to bid, a couple of details to work out, but we just wanted to kind of, you know, present it to you.
Just looking for a blessing to go forward with the bid process.
Yeah.
Motion to.
Motion to.
Oh, sorry.
Looking to authorize, moving forward with the entertaining bids.
Second.
Okay, Jerry. Could you go over a timeline for us on bidding and construction, Senator?
We are hopeful to put the project advertised for bid next Friday, if all goes well, we sold a couple approvals to, to secure, but they, we, we think that's pretty, pretty reasonable, so bid within two weeks, we would have a four-week bidding period. And then, ultimately be under construction or look to be close to get a contractor on board and ready to construct in late May, which actually dovetails really nice with, you know, they're still paving out there, the rail trail as it goes through the park site. The stone is down, they have, you know, they kind of went into winter mode, but I think April first, they plan on being back out there.
They're out.
Okay.
They're working now.
Yeah.
They find trails. Timing's working out unbelievably perfectly, because they said yesterday in the update that they're going to be off-site by the end of April. So, that works out.
Yeah.
Really well.
Yeah, in a perfect world, we, we would like to get that contractor off-site, so this contractor who gets this project, you know, doesn't have any encumbrances with that, so.
Thank you.
Once construction begins, when's completion?
We have a, a completion, I don't know the exact date, but it's October of this year, so we want to get them done and wrapped up, kind of at great, the tail end of the seeding season, so ideally give them the whole summer to build it. And then, be able to fine-grate, seed the areas in that nice early fall type of season, so we would look for in October or early November to be hundred percent complete and final payment to the contractor.
Hey, I like the design, I appreciate it, and I know there's sliding boards in it, that was something your mom and I had talked, well, we both kind of liked sliding boards, anyhow. The one thing I still am not clear on, what is the plan for addressing the invasive species on the bank that draw the spotted lanternflies, and they're just a pain?
Yeah, I think the banks being cleared as part of this phase, and I, I believe phase one, they're going to work on clearing the rest of the bank as part of the, what's under construction now. That was the intent of that contract, so we don't necessarily address that in here, but I again, I think it's going to be
We talked about that yesterday in the, in the the meeting with the contractor, J B I, we added that, rest of that bank's going to be cleared and grubbed, and then we'll have to reseed it. Some other type of coverage, vegetative coverage.
Is it, is it some kind of a covering that can? I mean, I, I, I don't know how you're keeping it from coming back, that's the real question, if the roots are in there, they're going to keep coming back, what is, what is it that you're doing to address that?
Um, that's not currently in any plan. We'll have to address that as we get in further into the park. There's going to be a lot more planting and development even after this, there's a lot of room in there, there's a lot of space, this is really just the first phase of, of the park, so it can it can go quite a bit further west.
And in the long term, again, the, the original master plan, because there are some steep banks out there, you know, there's Chestnut Street is here. And this little kind of graphic is the idea that, that is a steep embankment that drops straight down, you know, we always thought that some kind of a native grass mix would work well on that, so it would be something you wouldn't have to mow, because it's too steep, really too mow, so we can get a nice grade of native grass mixture on those slopes. And once they get a hold of it, your point about the seeds are there, and it is going to be hard to, but once the native grass is going to get established, usually it takes a good two years. Once you get them established, then they should be able to control, I mean, the invasives.
They did quite a bit of excavation down there for the site work. So they took a good layer off the top of most of that area. So I'd be surprised, well, I don't know, we'll see if they come back. We'll see.
Yeah. All right.
Um, little bit concerned, because the estimate we did on this was a couple of years ago. But we'll see how the bids come in, it's addressed that. There's that bridge when we, when we have to, but hopefully it'll be in line, but there's some things we could modify, we need to.
Again, we do have a look-up of details, and I think we'll try to put some alternates into the bid, so that we can, can, you know, if the prices do come in higher than we hope, then we can back some items out and still get a successful project going.
Any other questions? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Before they leave, I would just credit Aaron Boyer for the work on the youth-only fishing, want to credit Sir Wanger and Swiss Premium for every year we approach them, and this year is no exception, we're donating drinks to the kids, so no problem, thank you.
Not a problem.
All right, Todd, what are you doing for us today?
I'm smoking. Morning, Commissioners.
Thank you, good morning, Thomas.
Yeah, we're here again to present a re-application to D C and R for Phase ten B. Ten B is out in the northern part of the county, and it's the northernmost section of the rail trail. This grant application is for two-point-one miles of rail trail construction, primarily on rail bed, but there is some Union Canal property close by that has some very real significance, but this would be from Pine Tree Road in Union Township, northward, under the underpass of I seventy-eight, out to Lickdale Road, State Route ten-twenty. There's a tax location map, very costly project, about three-point-two million. Current cost estimate we just provided to you for the media, the new cost estimate is in your packet, it's about three-point-two million dollars. And the breakdown is, we're asking for a D C and R grant of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, that's this application. And we have a pending application and approval with Penn Dot, that decision's going to be announced shortly for about two-point-four-five million. As always, any cost overruns are our responsibility locally and privately, we need to submit this grant application to D C and R by April third, but I hope to do that just as soon as I can, we're waiting for one or two more letters of support, but they should be coming in shortly. And then we'll submit the grant application to Penn Dot.
E T and R.
I mean, excuse me, the D C and R, thank you, thank you, Joe, D C and R.
And you need a motion for that, John?
Yes, we do, and we have a resolution, Commissioner, that you must sign, again, that goes with each D C and R application, so yeah, we need a motion and an approval to resubmit this application to the D C and R.
I make a motion to resubmit the application to D C and R for the Phase ten B of the rail trail.
And second motion. Okay, it's been moved in second that we move forward with that application, reapplication, any questions regarding the motion? The experts are here. Yes?
What was the reason that you have to resubmit?
Well, that's a good question, and let's talk a little bit about that. When we submitted last year, we didn't have a firm commitment of Penn Dot on the two-point-four-five million, Laura, and now we're just moments away from getting that approval, the two secretaries of Penn Dot and D C and R had talked about this, so the approvals are in the works now, they weren't last year at this time. Okay, that's a great question, great question.
Matt, did you have something? Anything else?
Yeah, could you lay out a timeline like they did a minute ago, like, when the monies come in, ideally then, what happens next?
Well, the unique thing with this project, this project is well into final design already, okay? So we plan to go to construction next spring, spring of two thousand and twenty-five, have the project completed by the end of calendar year two thousand and twenty-five.
You said it'll be finished by the end of two thousand and twenty-five, okay.
It's actually an easy construction project, because we're just putting a surface on the rail bed for the most part, doing a bridge, doing a little bit of rehab, another structure or two, and it's a pretty simple, straightforward project.
In the special words.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Luckily, we don't have all these timelines that we started years ago. But this section, I think I've said it before, it's going to be a real scenic factor, probably the most scenic section of the trail, in my opinion, just having walked it. And it'll connect Jonestown to Swatire State Park.
Huge.
May I ask about the bridge? I walked north from, you know, past the fishing boat there at Jonestown and out, so I couldn't go anymore. I came to the Swatire Creek, and I didn't see a bridge, but it says you're rehabilitating a bridge, which bridge?
It's further out, it's further north.
Oh, further north.
That spot needs a new bridge, that's included in this budget.
It is in this budget, okay, that's what I was wondering.
Three structures, one rehabilitation and one completely new structure.
Okay, and what kind of bridge is it, is it wooden bridge, a steel bridge?
Probably be steel.
Yeah, because it's got to handle heavy loads.
It's a large, it's a large span, too. It could be prefab, though, they do pretty large prefab structures. It could be prefab though. They do pretty large prefab structures.
Oh, do they?
Just drop in there. But it's simple stuff.
Okay.
Just drop it.
They bring it in by Huey or what?
Yeah, Paul Jamie usually sets up the helicopter to put the bridges in place. Yeah, on our experience at Wilhelm Avenue.
Actually, where, where that bridge is going, there was, there's some pretty neat structures left that when the old railroad bridge went across, there were the water ran under the square like openings. And I think there was four of them. I think we figured out over time as water floods came and stuff, some of that stuff has washed away.
Yeah.
So it's, it was pretty cool just looking at those because it's a pretty sharp drop off there, but that, but that bridge is going to go.
I couldn't, I didn't see any pictures and I'm like, are they going to put in a new bridge? I don't know whether re redoing it, but that's further out. Okay.
Wilson is designing that structure.
Yes.
Yes.
It would be an interesting application of a, of a pre.
Or yeah.
Because the, some of the composite prefabs don't stand up to the road treatments, the winter treatment. And in this case, there won't be any winter treatment. So.
I'll just add that, you know, the ongoing success of getting these grants and so on reflects your relationships with those folks, DCNR and PennDOT and so on, and, and your performance, you know, the history that we have in terms of coming through with what we've promised. So that's all. Thank you for all your efforts in making that all happen.
And you know, they like the fact that the commissioners here have always been on board and supportive too. That helps a lot because not every place has that. These are competitive now. I mean, really competitive with grants. Especially DCNR because their budget's pretty limited. And we're lucky we have Lori, yike.
Yeah, she's been there.
Been with us for the whole time since the beginning and that really helps.
Well, we're just going to tell her she can't retire until after, you know, we get our trail done.
Where you get completed, the more likely the next one will come come along in funding because when you only have a few more pieces.
Yeah.
To put together.
What PennDOT tells us.
Yeah, PennDOT tells us that, but DCNR also now calls the rail trail a project of high value. And that means we're close to that 25 plus miles being completed. And you know, when you look at usage, you know, we're not blowing our horn here, but we estimate 350,000 annual users of the rail trail. It's phenomenal. Since COVID, his usage has just blown up.
In its state.
Oh, it's huge.
That's odd.
Thousands a day sometimes.
And I don't know if you mentioned this, but this gets connected to Swattara State Park. Which, if you ever, well, I know Joanne, you've been there, you had that big, it's all the way up. Basically that goes all the way up to Route 81.
It's 14 miles.
Down, yeah.
Yep.
That's already done.
And that is the most northern part of the rail trail after this is completed.
Yeah, that's a good point because you just had a meeting with Bureau of State Parks about the other side of Lickdale Road. But in our right now, our position is this will be the end of the LBRT at Lickdale Road. Because on the other side of Lickdale Road, State Parks was the grantee of the easement. So they're holding the easement. And so we, well, I think we'll stop our project right at Lickdale Road. Across the street will become State Park.
Sweet.
Yep.
You're right. Well, good news. On favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Okay.
Aye. Post same science. So moved.
Thank you.
I'm excited. I can't wait till it's done. And so are a lot of people. Lots of questions out there about when's it going to get done?
Yeah, absolutely. My passion's on Facebook about it.
Yeah.
But just for the Commissioners, I think one of our next big efforts as well is going to be getting this ordinance in place for the rail trail use, going out to municipalities and going through all of that. I think we're getting closer to finalizing the ordinance.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, we, we work together and I know the attorney too that's done some work for the rail trail.
Yeah.
Tim has, has also been involved in the communications as well. So and then we want to have a dialogue with the municipalities because, you know, they're going to be the ones sort of working.
Right. Yeah, I think that's the next step. We're going to go out and present it to the municipalities.
Okay. All right, John. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. The great.
Happy birthday. Heard you on the way. Used all the time in here.
I know.
Good morning.
Morning.
Hello. It's not on our speaker.
We'll change this one.
That all can see, but it's that one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome and glad Audrey would like to introduce yourself.
Audrey Fortin, Director of Lebanon County Probation Services.
Valerie Hatcher, Adult Probation Officer.
Valerie is our drug court officer. And good morning. This morning I am here to ask for your consideration of a contract with Take Heart Counseling and equine assisted therapy. Probation Services is interested in contracting with Take Heart out of Werner'sville, Pennsylvania for the purpose of offering group equine assisted therapy to individuals whose lives have been impacted by trauma. The sessions will initially be available to participants of our drug court program with the hope of expanding it to our other treatment courts and then probation participants. The cost of the sessions have already been built into the IP grant, so there's no cost to the. Take Heart consists of licensed professional counselors, licensed behavior specialists, and licensed marriage and family therapists. Some of the curriculum includes building resilience for overcoming trauma, coming to terms with past choices and moving past them, breaking old patterns of behavior, setting realistic and achievable goals for your future, and healing through healthy relationships with self and others. It's an opportunity to, for us to provide a different approach to counseling and therapy. Sometimes the regular standard individual or group approach doesn't work for some individuals. And so we're trying to reach other people who may be, have more of an impact through this. Because there's a level of risk involved with equine and outdoor activities, all participants are required to sign a Take Heart release of liability and waiver. Our county solicitor is also working on, thank you, Tony Gooley, is also working on a waiver for Lebanon County. So they'll be required to sign both waivers and Take Heart is also insured. So we respectfully ask for your support in signing this contract.
Yeah.
Just one comment. The, the, the funding for this is coming from the intermediate punishment grant, which is PCCD.
Correct.
Just to clarify.
Correct.
Okay. Motion. I'll make a motion to this contract.
And I'll second the motion. I think it's kind of cool. You're going to have people lining up for that program, I believe.
Well, we have a group identified already as our kind of pilot group to see how the first session goes and we'll meet with that. The nice thing about Take Heart is they're very adaptable to what our needs are. And so we'll definitely survey the individuals who participate and see, you know, if any changes need to be made. If we have a different group that we put together that have different needs, they have the ability to kind of alter the programming.
Are all the, the rides on their property or do they go out like on the rail trail or something?
Yeah. Honestly, most of the interaction is going to be done, done on the ground.
Okay.
There may be some where they actually saddle up, but it's contained in like a large barn area.
Okay.
Is this adults?
It is.
Okay.
Yes, it's now, for now it is adults.
Okay.
We've not talked about this for due time.
Do you guys ride?
I do, yeah.
Do you?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they're not riding? They're, they're like grooming the horses or whatever?
So it would be interactions within different settings. So it'll be in like an outdoor arena or an indoor arena. Will it be hand walking? They'll be interacting with other people going over obstacles. But nine times out of 10, they will not be actually riding the horses.
John had a question. Oh, sorry.
Program that is planned for the Quine Riding Club?
No, this is.
September?
It is.
Okay. Is there doing something, talking about, doing something similar there for better? Like there, Louis Hurst. How was that?
I don't know.
We heard it in Newtown about it about a month ago. I was just curious, but it's the same thing. Okay, thank you.
I gather the theory behind it is it's not therapeutic riding. It's the presence of the horses that offers the the therapy. It's a calming effect. It's sort of like, I don't mean to.
Like a therapy dog.
I don't mean to necessarily equate this directly with crowd control, but when forces are present in crowd control, it calms the crowd and, and, and I think it's the same effect. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. People forget they're in a counseling session.
Did you have another? No, I'm here. Right. If nothing else, on favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same science. So moved.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Yep, thank you for the innovation. Appreciate that. Okay. Anybody care for the packet?
I think they.
Oh, you got.
We're good?
Maybe. Is that the horse thing?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Morning.
Morning.
We have another packet. Pretty good. Would you like to introduce yourself and then you may go ahead?
Deidre and Lake, sir. I'm the Administrator of Lebanon County Office of Aging. So today I'm here to end up presenting our four-year plan through Pennsylvania Department of Aging. This plan will end up going from October 1st, 2024 through September 30th of 2028. The plan was created from information gathered from the last four years and the changes occurring in Lebanon County while also following a process outlined by Pennsylvania Department of Aging. The AAA examined local demographic information, needs assessment data obtained from the master plan sessions that were completed countywide in September of 2023 along with other community factors. The AAA established goals based on specific focus areas provided by Pennsylvania Department of Aging and outline details, objectives, strategies based on the local community. Related performance measures were established so AAA can measure its success in reaching the goals in the next four years. A public hearing was also held on October 31st, 2023 for any type of community feedback to add to this plan. So with the outline of that, some of the information in this is also an introduction to what Lebanon County Office of Aging is and when it was established in 1974. It also provides information of community outreach and the needs assessment. This is also including, including information from the Advisory Council and an Aging Inspired Committee along with the feedback from the sessions that were completed in September of 2023 for the master plan where we ended up asking our seniors, including and not limited to what their feedback was on our housing, transportation, in-home support, community support, communication barriers, and civic issues within our community. From these four public hearings that were provided, there were five topics that kept coming up as a focus. And one was provide more diverse transportation options. Create more of a dementia-friendly resources, services, and supports within our community. Expand on the AAA services that are not just core services to include other county agencies, coalitions, and to provide a stronger network of services. Number four would be focus on inclusivity of the Spanish speaking population. And to continue to grow Lebanon County Area Agency on Aging Protective Service.
Which you're already admitted to, number five.
Yes. Yes, it has grown quite nicely in the last six to eight months. There's an agency overview. It ends up having our mission statement and our vision, our values. We have included here our organizational structure within our agency. And just to add some information here, we're similar to 52 other Triple As within the state of Pennsylvania. And we're also governed by an advisory board, which is an 18-member advisory board. We meet bi-monthly and they provide feedback to me from the community and end up also assisting in what they end up feeling is needed in the community for aging. Some of our demographics. According to U.S. Census data from 2022, the population estimate 143,257 residents in Lebanon County with 20.5% being 65 and older. And the Pennsylvania average overall is only 19.6% of 65 and older. And what we've been seeing is the baby boomer population is starting to come in to to affect with us needing to end up amping up our services and and hopefully having more funding to be able to do that. There's some other demographic information listed in this for race and ethnicity for Lebanon County. And there's also service utilization listed here, which ends up giving some numbers to the amount of services and people we served here in Lebanon County last year through the Office of Aging.
I think some things like housing that you're referencing here, they're outside your scope.
Right.
Your, but you still want to show that, that those are needs. Yes.
That did come up in, in the master plan sessions and it's well known and it's basically statewide also as to the issue that we're having. It's statewide. There's housing issues with not having subsidized housing for the lower income seniors. There's just not enough senior housing, enough assisted living and personal care, which is all private pay that is affordable for our seniors. So those are all things at this point through this master plan sessions that was happening in September where the state gathered that information. They're putting a plan together for the next 10 years on how to end up supporting and correcting the deficits that we end up having for the aging population. So many outreach that was completed were at the four master plan sessions and they were September 6th, September 13th, September 20th, and September 27th. That myself and the deputy administrator went and provided these these sessions at the different senior centers throughout Lebanon County. And from that, that's where I ended up coming up with the different goals that we can end up working on. So one of the goals is transportation options. Seniors were saying that it's not easiest for them to end up getting around. It's, it's used a lot for medical, but for them to be able to go out socially, I would like to see it get a little stronger to accommodate their needs. Also, a different, a dementia-friendly community, working with some other community agencies where we're putting a pamphlet together to be able to direct them in the different ways of supports of what they can find in the community for people that have dementia. We do end up getting a lot of calls through protective services that family members don't know the next steps in what to take for somebody that has dementia, whether they have a power of attorney or whether they don't. So that would hopefully be listed in, in our cheat sheet that we're going to put together out to the community. Also looking to expand some of Lebanon County AAA services to the seniors so they can age in place. The state ends up wanting us to at least provide core services, but some of the non-core services I'd like to end up bringing back to end up supporting them in the community, which we're working on. And I know that was brought up with these different master, master plans. And I know that was brought up with these different master plan sessions that other counties would like to end up seeing those non-core services come back, such as home support, med dispensers, and some other things that just weren't falling under core services, which our core services are considered personal care, meals on wheels, and a lifeline unit. The other part is social inclusion and outreach to our Spanish population. We found that there is lack from us being able to get into that population and having contacts, trying to get our information out to them and what services are there. So we have recently been able to hook up with some Spanish women that are pretty strong in the community. Actually, we found them through different churches and we're only starting that at this point, trying to coordinate our information to be able to get it out into their community. And last, what I have as one of the goals is develop an elder abuse task force, which that would end up hopefully including crisis, our court system, our county solicitor, our protective service unit, and guardianship agencies that we end up working with. So some of the other things that I can't work on in our plan, but they're definitely there and we're in need of, under some quality management things, is housing. And again, it comes to the fact that we just don't have enough housing for seniors, especially subsidized housing and some assisted living and personal care that is affordable for them based on what their income is, since it doesn't fluctuate, it stays the same. So there are some statistics there from the countywide housing needs assessment that was completed in 2023. It just ends up showing the increase in households and also what the aging population is. Some other issues that came up are civic issues, such as unsafe sidewalks. Some of the sidewalks can end up causing a tripping risk for some of our seniors that are trying to get around, whether it's socializing, going to the grocery store, or even getting from one place to another with doctor's appointments. Some economic issues that kept coming up is the seniors are requesting not to pay for taxes. So that ends up coming up a lot. And then the other is at the bottom, the assisted living and personal care facilities, which kind of fits under the housing part, too. Under this plan, there is four objectives to each goal that ends up also outlining the performance measure and also target dates as to when it will be reevaluated again and if we're meeting our goals.
Lot of data, lot of work being into it, thank you. That's a four-year plan. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve the four-year plan?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
I'm just curious, on the one aspect of the transportation options, you wanted to work on that. Is that something that you're working on with Lebanon Transit? Or is that a AAA type of transportation service?
Kind of back and forth. We do end up funding the shared ride through Office of Aging and coordinate that with London Transit. But I'm going to be sitting in on the London Transit Advisory Council. So I'm hoping with some of my input that we can end up reviewing what our seniors are also still saying that they need, because I know they're revamping the routes right now and trying to make it more user-friendly. So hopefully with these changes, we can try and do something more for our seniors, too.
Anything else? No other questions, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so moved. Well done, thank you. Gentlemen, good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome, and if you'd like to introduce yourselves, then you may proceed with your report.
Morning, my name is Michael Ott. I'm the Special Operations Chief of the County of Lebanon.
I'm Gary Brown, the Deputy Director of Emergency Management. I apologize to you guys first. Jamie, one for yourself. That's the updated report. Pima uploaded the wrong one when I had it sent yet. We are here today to present the annual county hazmat report as required by Pima. We have just some highlights for you to present to you. There are a total of 61 facilities which have extremely hazardous substances above threshold planning quantities. These facilities have a total of 344 chemicals on site throughout the facilities. There are 92 reporting facilities that do not have the extremely hazardous substances above threshold reporting quantities with a total of 202 chemicals on site. One of the unique circumstances that was documented in this report that we had to document, unique circumstances that this county faces. And the one that was documented was Norfolk Southern Rail Line and how it transverses through the county, how it splits the county in half, how it splits the city in half, how it splits Lebanon Valley College in half. Also affects 13 municipalities and within a half-mile radius, it affects approximately 40,000 residents.
So from the special operations team side, we responded to a total of 55 hazardous material incidents in 2023. Out of those 55, 23 were Level 2 responses, which is what our hazmat team is certified to for Pima guidelines. And that means that we're staying certified as a hazardous material team. Thirty-two of those were petroleum-based spill responses. And we spent as a team 1,349 personnel hours in training. 1,280 of those hours for responding to alarms. Part of our training is preparing for our recertification process that will be coming up this year. And they will have a full-involved exercise. Part of that is that we conduct a full-scale self-evaluated exercise, which last year involved the mitigation and securing a leak from a chlorine cylinder. We conducted two functional exercises centered around suiting operations and decontamination. So we have the proper personal protective equipment going forward and we're wearing that. Three tabletop exercises were also conducted, two which involved train derailment scenarios and one which also involved an incident on the interstate.
Some of the public outreach that we had to report on included LEPC outreach activities. And with those, we attended the Hebron United Methodist Church Festival, the Back to School event hosted by Making a Difference Lebanon PA and Elko School District's Career Day.
So we're asking you as the commissioners and the county administrator for your approval and signatures to complete this to be eligible for the hazardous materials response grant that's available for us.
Let's get a motion, then we can have questions. I'll make a motion, too.
I'll second it, and I do have a question. When will the full-scale exercises take place?
We don't know that yet. Pima will let us know.
They assign that date.
They, once we get the, this is part, this is a little bit of it. Once we get that report back from Pima, they're going to schedule the inspection of our equipment and our policies and procedures as far as the hazardous materials function goes. And then they'll also schedule the exercise.
I know the general public isn't tuned into all the effort that goes into protecting them in these areas. Can you just, you mentioned the number of hours in response. And I know the last couple of years has really, the team has been strengthened, hazmat team and certified and so on. But you know, is there a comparison? Are we doing twice as many hours because we have, you know, a better team of response? Or just to give a little flavor as far as how much we've come along as a county hazmat team?
I can't speak for the former chief. But no, but in all fairness and seriousness, Gary really set this program forward for success. And I was fortunate enough to just ride his coattails. But what we have done as a team has continued to move forward because of the standards that Pima has set. So there are X amount of hours. They require certain levels through a technician, through an operations person, or through the awareness part as a responder. So it would behoove anybody to continue to do training because that's your lifeblood, that's your insurance policy. And because we do delve into the situations that most first responders don't necessarily deal with on an everyday basis, the chemical responses, the petroleum responses and stuff of that nature, those things change on a daily basis. So you want to maintain that. And I think by what has been established and where we continue to move forward with our new facility that we're going to be moving into, our new apparatus that we're going to be purchasing, it just piques people's interest and they want to be part of that. And we have a very good reputation throughout not only the county, but also the Commonwealth. So that really helps us to try to sell the brand.
One of the important things to note is by state law, you have two hours from request to dispatch, respond, and arrival on scene of a hazardous materials incident. Our average response time in 2023 was from dispatch to arrival, 13 minutes. So if we were to have a contracted team do that, they're not making, you know, cover the county. They're not making that time, which is very important. It's very important to get a handle on the situation, to make sure we're getting eyes on it and make sure that we're mitigating that issue as quickly as possible. Chief Ott's very modest. I did a little bit, his job when we hired him was to take what was there and make it better. And I think he's done that. So county's in good hands with Chief Ott at the head.
I noticed that from '23 to '24, all the numbers seem to have dropped. Total number of chemicals at the facilities, 210 to 202, number of chemicals at planning facilities. And I don't know what the difference is, but that went from 356 to 344. Are they using less chemicals or have places closed or what is going on there?
So the difference between those are, there's extremely hazardous substances. And those are the things that really pose a threat if released out of their original container or misused to the general public. They're identified by the EPA as that. And the TPQ you saw there, the threshold planning quantity, is how much of that, there's a certain amount per chemical that it has to reach, be over that to write an emergency plan for them. So that's the difference between a planning facility and a reporting facility. A reporting facility has diesel fuel. It could be gasoline over a certain set amount for the EPA. Now, answer your question is why there's less? It's not that we're losing facilities. We actually gained seven planning facilities from 2022 to 2023. What it is, is to report these chemicals, it has to be on site for three consecutive days. So what's happening is facilities are not storing them on site anymore. They're getting them and they're ordering them, they're using them right away. So just because the number is lower, doesn't mean that there's less in the county. What it means is the facilities are not storing it as long. They're getting it in, they're using it, and therefore they don't have to report.
Time inventory, okay. That explains it, I just wasn't sure. Thank you.
Yeah, anything else? There we have a motion in a second to approve this hazmat report, this annual hazmat report. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved. Thank you. Morning.
Good morning.
Good evening.
Entourage?
No entourage, I'm just all.
Please introduce yourself and go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Dan Lyons, I'm with the Redevelopment Authority. And I'd like to request this morning modifications to two Community Development Block Grant budgets. But before that, I'd just like to announce that the county, we learned two weeks ago, the county will be receiving a $400,000 home grant for us to continue operating the First Time Home Buyer Program. And I just want to say thank you for supporting that application last summer.
Does that include the city or do they have their own?
It includes the city. It's countywide inclusive of the city. And it provides down payment and closing cost assistance to income-eligible home buyers. Now, on the Community Rowan Block Grant side, what I'd like to request is a modification to two fiscal year budgets. Fiscal year 2019, which is your oldest open budget. Our contract with the state is expiring next month and there remains a $20,000 balance in that grant. It was allocated to Mid-Penn Legal Services. Unfortunately, they're unable to spend it and they won't be able to spend it before the deadline. I'd like to request that we move that $20,000 to Volunteers in Medicine, which was also funded in that fiscal year. They have excess unreimbursed costs that they can collect on quickly. In fiscal year.
Don't take these separately or can we do them all in one?
Together, if you don't want.
Yeah, they're one resolution.
Combined. In fiscal year 2022, which is your newest open grant year, we had a curb and sidewalk project in Jonestown Borough that was approved and included in our application. The state took issue with the income survey that was used to qualify the activity. And we had to essentially swap out the activity, put a placeholder in there, and then redo the income survey in Jonestown. The borough did that and succeeded in requalifying the activity. So this is just a maneuver to replace that activity in that fiscal year budget.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution that you request.
Any need to read it, Jamie? You good?
No, this contains those things he described.
We have a motion in a second to accept the report that Dan has presented in resolution form. Any questions regarding this resolution? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Post same signs, so moved.
Quick follow-up on the city. How much of the $400,000 goes to the city?
It's not earmarked in any way by geography. So the Redevelopment Authority would administer that first-come, first-served basis, irrespective of their geography.
Okay.
Do you recall what it was last?
Um, let's see.
Those three homes, were they in New?
Well, we had five homes under the current grant. And I want to say that.
I'm just talking about the $400,000s.
Yeah.
Was it 350 or, you know, did it?
For the city, probably.
No, just the overall number. Has it been increased or decreased?
It was actually $400,000 last time as well.
Okay.
So remain the same.
Sorry.
And I think maybe two of the five were in the city.
The five were in the city. I know we did the one in North Cornwall, Pleasant Hill.
And we had a West Lebanon Township, we had a Myers Town Borough.
Okay.
Some diversity.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Five items to present before we move to Board of Elections. First item we have is a hotel tax grant request. And this is from the Lancaster Kennel Club. And they are going to be holding their Red Rose Classic at the Lebanon Expo Center in.
Mason.
But they've given you a pretty extensive application here on a lot of, a lot of information on how their event is attended and benefits from their event to the tourism community for Lebanon County.
Yep, yep.
Their total project cost for their show is $14,426.55.
Um, their total project cost for their show is fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-five cents. They are requesting four thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents of that. That is thirty-four percent of their budget. If you look, I just want to note this because they did a great job on the second page of their narrative. Um, they have three hundred and sixty registrations for the show so far, which relates to about a hundred and fifty individuals who travel with family and friends. They are, um, the timing for this year, this coming show is that the Westminster Kennel Club in Queens, New York is being held the Monday and Tuesday after their show. So they believe they're going to have a, quite a number people handling, uh, dog handlers coming through the area and attending their show on the way to New York. And they have secured ten hotel rooms for their judges. Um, they're using Down on the Farm Catering, uh, local for the Lebanon Expo Center for meals and for the judges and so on, also for the public. And they have been doing this at the Expo Center since nineteen ninety-nine. Originally, they moved there thirty years ago that they, or they've been in Lebanon County third, since thirty years ago. Because they were unable to find an affordable undercover site in Lancaster County. So they've been here ever since with their show. So.
It looks like the, what they're requesting will cover the rentals at the hall.
Yeah.
Expo.
Yeah.
So motion both in both.
Second.
It's removed in second. Chips all the boxes. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
I have, uh, one exemption request for disabled veteran eligibility from, uh, property taxes. This is a surviving spouse, Ricky Good of Locust Street, Palmyra.
Let me make a motion to approve that request.
Moved in second that we approved that tax exemption for that spouse who was a veteran. Any questions? Not all favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs, so moved.
I have a grant application, uh, for you to consider for the, the Pennsylvania County Risk Pool, who is our, our property and liability insurance carrier. They provide a loss prevention grant program each policy year. And the safety committee meets and considers different needs from, uh, the departments around the county. And, um, if approved by the safety committee, we pass it on to you for your uh, consideration and approval. In this case, we have a grant request of four thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars to replace the emergency lighting at the, uh, MHIDEI building. Uh, it is at least thirty years old. Um, it is still functioning. However, parts are unavailable and they do test it occasionally. Um, they are, so if we have malfunctions there, they'll be unable to repair it. It is an eligible cost for the grant. This grant is thirty thousand dollars a year from P Corp. If you approve this grant, we will have about eighteen thousand dollars left to use before the end of May. So we'll probably be back with some others. But this, um, is certainly beneficial to us because it saves on some budgeted capital expenses when we can do this through our, our loss control grant and, and certainly is something that would uh, benefit us in a liability scenario of if the emergency lighting working. All right. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second that we approved that P Corp grant request. Any comments? Any no, no in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs, so moved.
Okay. Uh, I have an appointment request for the redevelopment authority of the county of Lebanon. Amy Leonard was a member of the board for many years, the authority for many years, and has now been appointed to be the solicitor to the authority. Um, and cannot serve simultaneously as a board member and solicitor so that her resignation creates a vacancy. And the authority is recommending Jessica Kozoff, who is a business development and project manager, manager for Arthur Funkenson, also uh, is a, a certified Realtor at Penn Realty in Mount Gretna. They believe her experiences in both would be beneficial to the authority.
Make a motion to appoint, uh, Jessica Kozoff to the board.
Second.
It's removed in second. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs, so moved.
And you have, uh, you received a request from Pennsylvania eight-one-one uh, organization that promotes safe digging. And they are asking that you recognize April of twenty-twenty-four as Pennsylvania eight-one-one Safe Digging Month in Lebanon County. And so we will, uh, forward this on to them.
Okay. Is there a motion? Off and over.
Second.
Removed in second that we, uh, recognized through this proclamation, Safe Digging Month for eight-one-one. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same signs, so moved.
Speedy.
Okay.
You can recess or adjourn, but there's.
Just adjourn.
This.
I'm going to shoot a burn off. I apologize. Like, I just got a text message this morning from Shelly Europe, who's the, uh, director of Karen Cupboard in Palmyra. And she, they have a building project that they're, uh, in fundraising mode for right now to expand their capability to serve the general Palmyra area. And they are about to apply to Senators Casey and Fetterman and as well as Congresswoman Buzier in office for some funding and ask me personally, would I provide a letter of support? And I'm willing to do that and I plan to do that, but I thought I would introduce it. Today, she's going to draft something and send it to us. And I would like to present that for, I think there's some timing issue to do this. So pending final approval of that letter, I would like to get, put a motion on the floor when we authorize. Uh, clever scenario. Yes, I support it.
Okay, second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve this, uh, support for Karen Cupboard. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved. Right? Anything from the floor? Before we go into the, uh, lecture board, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. You stand to adjourn. Thank you for your input and your attendance now. Bring the gavel over to your.
All the meeting to board of, of the county board of elections. And, uh, you know, uh, o- open the floor. First item on the agenda is to opt, uh, time for public comment. Is there any public comments this morning?
Have a comment.
Yes, sir. Would you please identify yourself for the.
Ball Brown, eleven Cornwall. And I'm, uh, I want to know what kind of security is being placed on the out-of-bounds, um, voting, uh, depository that's out here in the parking lot. What kind of security is being placed on that? So we know that everybody is legitimate and that there's one ballot per person.
Oh, uh, do you want to try? It's a fully staffed, uh, it's under camera. And it's only, uh, only open when it's staffed.
Is it open twenty-four hours a day or is it only open?
Eight-thirty to four-thirty. It's just, uh, it's just an extension of the office. So just when the office is open, it's open out there with a staff.
So my question would be, why would we spend additional money on it when the people would just come in here and, and form the and complete the absentee ballot process that we've always done in the last fifty years?
Uh, the idea is that it's very typical to get into the building if you're handicapped. Uh, and this is a more accessible way.
Handicapped, I can certainly understand, but that I'm sure it's not just handicap people using that.
Now, it's also a lot more convenient for everyone.
Once you're sure about the convenience part, the convenience part is we have, we know there's all kinds of issues with this outpost of valve box repositories. And it just seems like we're kind of allowing that to creep into our county. That's something that concerns me greatly nationally as well as statewide and now countywide.
I read in the paper this morning that if, uh, the state has their way, there has been an introduction of the first step has been taken to eliminate not just drop boxes, but also extensions of the voter registration office, which would be our parking lot. So we're investing, uh, more money in a shed. So uh, I hope that they don't d- destroy that. Personally, I see value in allowing people to drop those off and um, you can disagree with me and that's fine, but I see value in that.
The interesting part of that is with their, the, the big picture motion is they are moved, they're starting the slow motion process of setting up remote voting centers. Um, so this would be our toe in the water on that, uh, looking at what people that are behind that movement, but that initiative have written personally about it. You can see that there is, uh, that the idea is to have multiple remote voting centers spread out around the county, uh, for not so much sheds and professional storefronts or something. I, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but you can kind of see where they're going with this. We're talking long-term. I don't think that's going to move forward at this time, but at this time, I think long-term it'll be where, where Pennsylvania goes, which is where this plan kind of started to begin with. And this is sort of in between for now.
Are there any additional public comments this time?
Not Sean, you want to go back with your items for approval?
Sure. We have today, we are almost on L and A, and this would be the ballot. They, uh, I sent digital copies to you. I printed out uh, six copies, one from Republican, one Democrat from each of the general assembly races. That would capture everything that would be on the ballot except for the committee races. Then you have to have all two hundred and forty pages. Um, you'll notice the only thing here that would be of note that I would say is for the Democrat ballot, you have William Parker on the ballot for U.S. Senate. And you have Bavarka for the Republicans for U.S. Senate. There are the two cases. Well, were, Parker has just been removed. So, uh, it's too late to go back. We're, we're rolling forward. Bavarka, we don't expect even a decision on that possibly for one to two weeks. So everyone in, everyone in state now has been holding up for that. And we won't have a decision anyway. So we have to, we have to roll. Uh, to that end, if you go past the ballots, there are two, uh, disclaimers, one for the Democrats and one for the Republicans. These were taken from another county, um, just adopted for ours, forwarded them over to Matt earlier. And this is what would go, something like this would go out with the mail-in ballots that says warning.
When this is the one?
Yeah. And there's one for both. It's just the same thing with the, the Democrat and, and candidate they've swapped. So these would be in the polling places on election day in each fully, um, voting booth. And these would be mailed with, probably in a smaller format, would be mailed with the ballots as well. And this is generally, as far as I know, what every county is doing. I mean, this is literally the same language that other counties are using as well.
I'll, I'll put forward a motion to approve the ballots presented.
Motion on the floor in a second.
Second.
Do you have any comments or questions? Just something that I don't know if there is a, an answer that you can give or if it's a future, uh, correction that, but I, I'm just curious, why we use the Democratic versus it's a Democrat party, not the Democratic party?
It's the legally defined language that I have to adopt as provided to me.
Is that a good enough answer? And can we, you know, I mean, I, it's an answer, but it doesn't make sense to me that, you know, it's so I know because it has been.
We want Democrat longer than Republican when you spell it. We want more letters.
I just want it to be correct. I, I wanted to.
I, I, and I, I, if, if I agree with Commissioner Phillips. It is, it feels unnatural to me to write it that way, but that's what the legal ver- verdict is that I provided that I was.
That we can refer this to our solicitor. Among everything else. It's just something that I thought it, it, it's, it's kind of, you would think it'd be a simple fix.
Yeah.
To make it correct. Okay. And we'll hold up to you.
Your questions, comments? None? All in favor? You say aye.
Aye.
Post? Have it.
So, uh, general status, a few, few things, all good news. Uh, one, L and A is underway. We have multiple vendors on site this week. Uh, No Ink is down the hall working on the poll books. Uh, William Penn is working out L and A across the warehouse. We have had no issues whatsoever. Uh, we hope to be done L and A by tomorrow morning for the vote tabulators. Uh, the E poll books I hopefully done tomorrow. I don't have any, we just started that a few hours ago. So, uh, I'm still figuring that process out. Um, but no problems whatsoever. Everything's going to be fine. Uh, staffing, um, questions?
I see some, well, go ahead.
They said, I mean, we made an offer to, uh, a new deputy. We're very excited about that. Joy, uh, who, I mean, is back there today, uh, that we hope to bring her on board as soon as possible. I'll be making an offer to a new, uh, office support slash receptionist. Uh, hopefully by the end of the week, we had some good candidates, but I'm very excited with one in particular. So hopefully that works out. You'll be hearing about that shortly. I have numbers for you here on a few, well, actually let's do the booth first. The booth. We are still wait, expecting the, the shed to be delivered next week. We have power already run out to it. So that's all set. And we have the schedule full for the first week of, of people filling shifts, uh, open close. So the only thing I'm a little concerned about is getting the signage back in time for the outside of the booth. But we have cones, we have vote here signs, we can adopt things if we have to while we wait for the sign. Uh, by the numbers, I have some interesting numbers for you. If you go to the back of the packet with the ballots, I threw one extra page on there this morning because I was already pulling this up from my own research. Thought you'd find it interesting. If you look at the numbers for mail-ins and where we're at, we're in a very unexpected place for this primary, but I want to give it some perspective. So going back a few years, you had sixty-five-hundred mail-ins. Then in twenty-twenty-two, you had twelve thousand. Then back last year, back down to sixty-six-hundred and this year sixty-seven-hundred. So uh, twenty-twenty-two was the outlier. And we were expecting that for this particular primary to match or exceed that. Uh, the numbers have fallen off the cliff statewide. Uh, numbers are way down since the presidential race has been decided on both tickets. Uh, and all the Senate candidates have been eliminated except, well, I mean, I know we have some extra ones on our ballot, but they will be by election day most likely eliminated. There are almost no competitive races outside of the local hundred and second. So, um, the mail-in ballots have just statewide, there's nothing. Uh, we should be getting hundreds a day of applications and we're getting thirty to forty at this point. So what you see here, these numbers for the twenty-twenty-four down at the bottom aren't going to be changing much. Uh, but we're looking in the fall, we are still expecting closer to fifteen thousand uh, for the mail-ins. That's our estimate. I don't think there will be a lack of interest in the fall. So, uh, what's even more interesting to me is out of those numbers, that sixty-seven, sixty-six number, we've had about a thousand people terminate their mail-in requests. They want to vote in person. So net, we've actually added to that number of the core number. So, um, it is going up. I don't know. Also, if you had seen the news in the last twenty-four hours, Republican Party uh, supporters have pledged ten million dollars in Pennsylvania to drive recruitment for mail-in ballot requests for the fall. So they're, uh, investing pretty heavily in that. I'm not sure how they're going to spend that money, but they are going to be spending money to drive that number up. Uh, we've had twenty-five military, uh, ballot requests. That's up from three last year, uh, last fall. So that's significant. Uh, and that's just for the primary. We expect that to go way up in the fall as well. And, uh, there are numbers. It's rocking and rolling. Here. You can see so. Any questions about those?
Thank you, Sean. And I do expect then turnout will be down for the same reasons in the primary.
I would expect so. Yeah. I mean, I think we're going to be doing that in the last year, but I don't expect it to be as bad as.
Well, I mean, a couple of comments, uh, it's been an interesting few months of discussion, um, and very, uh, posing, uh, views on this subject. My own personal view is that, you know, I, I prefer people go to the polls. I, I always does that. I understand those that value and, and really enjoy the mail-in ballot. It gives them time to, to review those ballots and, and heard many things, people, but uh, we made a, a change in our process. Sean and I just talked the other day about more communication and maybe some frequently asked questions to make sure people understand. Sarah, back to your, your earlier question, it's not a, a, a remote drop box. This is an extension of the office so that somebody will be handing somebody a ballot. It's not a box that somebody's dropping a ballot in, which has, has actually been published, I saw, which is is a misunderstanding. So anyway, I, I believe this is more secure. I worked thirty-eight years in the healthcare field, not as a clinician, but learned something important that you treat the disease, not symptom. In my opinion, the drop, whether we have a drop box or not, or how we accept mail-in ballots is treating a symptom. My opinion, I, I, I'm not a big fan of mail-in ballots. I, I, but that's where we have to live with that right now. It, uh, seems like, uh, my party seems to be promoting it, uh, uh, even more at the state level. So again, we need to, to make it as. Uh, even more at the state level. So again, we need to to make it as secure as we can, and I think we've done that. We've made an improvement. On the 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 previous drop box uh location. Sir, um.
He.
Public comments over, but I'll allow if you have.
Okay, I was I was not here at the last meeting when the poll books were fully discussed. So this may have been addressed and but I don't know the answer to it at this point. Uh, with the e-poll books rolling out, which I'm not opposed to, but is there going to be a hard copy registration book there to reference? Those that are not on the electronic poll book? There are going to be a cross reference.
There will be, but they're the exact same data file. There would be no difference. Okay, but in case let's. I don't know. If the worst ha- I know something unexpected happened, there is often the paper books. They'll be sealed in the bags, but they'll be there.
Thank you for your question. Anything else?
I have the order. I I do have one thing for the gallery over here. Uh, it would be really helpful to get out there that Lebanon County is not late. In sending ballots. The whole state has been held up. Uh, as far as I know, we will be one of the first three counties in the whole state that is actually getting the mail next week. Um, there's only one county that I know that had paperwork processed before we did, and it's Butler, and ours are going out the same day as they are, so. Uh, it's not us. If people are wondering where their ballots are, it's not us.
I I just wanted to point out that when you go to the polls and vote, you personally put your ballot into the scanner. Nobody else touches your ballot. So adding a person is not necessarily, I know there's a personal service, but people like to. Put it in themselves, whether it's the box or whatever. So that's why I I resisted. I I think it's adding an extra step. And that makes people uncomfortable because they like to put it in themselves.
Yeah, when that first read. Are these people volunteers? Will be more than one person in there collecting the ballots? How how's that playing out?
Uh, we drew. From our poll workers right now. We we've had a lot of people step up uh and for so far, everyone in our list that I know of has been a poll worker or canvasser. Uh, and it's narrowing. It's not that we don't have enough necessarily. It's finding, just like on election day. Putting the people. On the right days with availability. You know, that that's where we're we're kind of just struggling a little bit, but we are having lots of people step up. One. Yeah, one.
Any else? Anything else for the go to the order? Not one or two emotional journey.
Submit.
It's added during. Thank you.